I now call to order the committee in the hold on October sixth, twenty twenty five. Liam, will you please call roll?
Number Wyatt?
Here.
Number Owen?
Here.
Number Bethany?
Here.
Number Warren?
Here.
Number Peters?
Here.
Number Cleister?
Here.
Number Orr? Sex present.
All in favor?
Hi.
First up is community and economic development. Um, I'm gonna let administration talk about our, is it cess what I came and say?
Semi-quinsentennial. Say that three times. Semi-quinsentennial. That is America two fifty.
Yeah.
It's otherwise referred to, and some of you may be old enough to remember the bicentennial year of nineteen seventy six, seventeen seventy six. We were in elementary school or wherever we were, everybody dressed up red light and blue and lots of parade and Patriots and stuff. Some of the young ones don't remember that.
Yes.
Well, this will be their first one. So we are, uh, need to pass the resolution to become an actual official city. So Mayor Stroya says, let's do it. My friend, the repulsor recently, some of the other neighboring cities have all passed their resolution to become an official city. And then, of course, uh, we've always had things. We've always had our race and our parade and, you know, things around the fourth, and this will be a celebration of the fourth. So we'll continue our regular and we'll add on a few more things. So we have to designate two people from the city. Leo and I have been the chosen designated people, and then we have to form a committee. Anyone who wants to be on it, let me know. Anyone who knows anyone who wants to be on it, let me know. So far, I've secured our former mayor, Stephen Wilder. He is leading the charge on the committee. He said he wanted to stay involved. Sarah, what'd you say?
That's gonna be a lot of state partnerships. So that's what is also allowing us to do is partner with all state activities. And then we're kind of using their platform to have our celebrations.
Yep.
Okay. All right. All right, finance and property.
Okay, first up, we have.
Is there a motion to move item three to the council agenda? Please bear a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Now we'll move that on event to the agenda. Now, Mr. Peters. Finance.
Okay, very good. So this is the, uh, professional auction services, uh, vehicles, equipment. I didn't, uh, like we did, we wanted to use any questions, concerns for council?
I just wanted to ask you if you remember doing this fifteen times while you were on council. This must have all been familiar to you. Good.
All right, so, uh, there's no, uh, questions from council, finance, do you have anything? Yeah, there's your motion to move, uh, item four A to council agenda. Motion to move.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I oppose. Moving on for B, resolution to acknowledge the rates fees, uh, for two thousand twenty six, utilities, emergency rigs, permits. You know, first the.
We would actually like to do our whole process of budget presentation. We have been phased rates in phase for next year, and who's the person out there, organs and including corporations? So maybe we forget those three if they're short, but efficient presentation.
You want to do that now?
Yeah.
All right, I'll kick it off here. So we'll do the presentation and then for council, uh, if you can hold the questions till the end, till everybody's through. And then we'll have a Q and A for it. Where to start? Okay, so, uh, first I want to say thanks for, uh, everybody that voted to, uh, everybody, all, the whole community for issue four. Issue four puts us in a place where we have, I'd say, easier time with, uh, our long-term vision. It allows us to do several things that are going to be in this budget now. For example, capital improvements. Fifty-two, fifty-three years since we built a, a, a fire station. Bill, you know, how long did we, we struggle to, to get together, uh, an issue that would pass on this? And we finally did it. So, um, I can't be more excited about our long-term future. It puts us on a track where we were able to repeal three property taxes and start collecting at two percent. Short-term, there is going to be a little bit of a wall. There's going to be an anomalies that we'll, we'll talk about in the future presentations. But long-term, I can't be more excited or happy about our future. Where this put us in just an unbelievable place compared to the last few budgets that we, we have been through. I think you'll notice the tone in this budget is a lot better, a lot more exciting about our future than, than the previous ones. So also, the, the next big capital improvement would be police. So police get to have a renovation. Long overdue. So we get to address our fire EMS, police and dispatch to give them the services that they're the, the, the infrastructure that they deserve to provide the services to our community. And I can't stress how happy that makes me feel and how proud I am for, for everybody getting together and passing them. So the other things that I think, um, are important about this budget are, uh, the, uh, the, the harsh master plan where we, we allocated, uh, uh, an amount of money, a hundred thousand dollars to, um, we'll see whatever, whatever it gets, um, detailed in that harsh master plan to, um, add as kind of a placeholder for us to do some improvements. Very much looking forward to that. Let me go back to the budget process. When I first started going to council meetings in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, uh, the budget process lasted three or four hours. And the, you would spend twenty minutes talking about a cell phone bill that was fifteen hundred dollars. It was, it was not as organized and as transparent as everything it is right now. So if you look at the process now, it started on August first and finance, you, you streamline that to a point where it is exceptional. It's open, it's transparent, uh, you meet with the department, the department heads, they give good feedback. Everybody does, does due diligence and everything is prepared for everybody to look at. Council came in individually, had all their meetings. And, and I think the greatest thing about it is, is there wasn't exceptional asks from it. It was kind of, everybody knew that this was going to be a tough year budget-wise. And, and you stayed kind of in your realistic approach for everything. A lot of people think that this was a windfall for us. And it wasn't, especially in the transition period. We have, we, we do have some short-term pains, I'll say. But the long-term future is very bright and I'm very excited about it. I think that's all I have for the overview for everything. Let's go to the next slide. Well, Catherine, you're gonna go.
I was just gonna, I wanted to echo what the mayor said, just so everybody knows, like, how much time? This didn't just start a couple of weeks ago, started several months ago, thanks to finances, organization. We pull those meetings with each operational department head and we sit down and we go through and, and just what Matt said, that there wasn't huge asks. There were some things that they are not able to get. They are amazing staff of leadership, they can think outside the box. If I can't get this now, what can I do? That means renting equipment instead of purchasing equipment until we get other things paid off. They're really start, they really see budgeting. And Jeff, you probably, Stephanie, you remember the times when we brought them in here and put them at the podium and questioned them about everything. And that doesn't happen now. I mean, we really trust their leadership and their feedback and in this planning. We all know there's only so much money and there's so many services that need delivered. And our, um, operational staff has helped work well with finance and with us to come up with this. So here we go, without further ado, finance.
All right, next, next slide. All right, so we'd like to start, uh, this, uh, presentation and talk about our reserves or fund balances. Those are basically our savings account and it tells us how long we continue operating a revenue money. For twenty twenty-six, the general fund has about six months saved up. And for the water fund, it has about eight months. So I'm gonna explain a little bit of how that works. The general fund has six months of revenue and reserve for this fund. We measure reserves against revenue because it depends heavily on property taxes, income taxes and some fees. The risk here is that revenues can fluctuate within the economy. Taxes, taxes collected suddenly slow down. We, we would want to know how long a reserve could carry us into the year. So for the general fund, we have approximately a happy year for six months. Fund balance by the end of the year, um, for next year, we're estimating. For the water fund, we were estimating sixty-five percent over eight months of carryover. And we measure that from a percentage of expenses, the expense side to, um, the fund balance to the expense side. And that comes out to three quarters of a year, eight months. This is a little different than the general fund because we, like, like, the general fund, you know, we have the revenues on what expenses. Water fund, we have the expenses, which are supported by charges rather than the tax income, like income tax, bank interest. So the current question is whether we keep paying for those operating costs and services, system maintenance. That's all we measure reserves against the expenses for the business type fund like the water fund. Our target is one hundred percent, so we're trying to get towards that. We've been kind of, um, inching our way there, but the target is hundred percent. We're at twelve months carryover, and so we'll be there hopefully in the future, so.
Can we look at a history of where our fund balance had, had been? And they each tell their own story, which we're not gonna get in every year's story, but we do want to hit some highlights. We had started a general fund policy, remember, the minimum target balance is twenty-five percent. Did you recall last winter, we went through a rating with S and P Global? We had a forty percent carryover and they suggested that that was, that should be the minimum. We should never be below that. So our target keeps increasing and Jim explained, especially in the water fund, we need a one hundred percent carryover. You need a full year's operating budget that comes from the EPA's best practices. General fund's a little different. We do have a big payday on tax, income tax day when you all are filing, filing in April. City receives most of that money in May. And then we do have money that's collected through the years from, or through the months, it's got everything holding and then business net profit. So we have, um, a three-year phase-in on the collection of the new half percent income tax. We, we worked with Rita on calculating this. They believe of, with experience from other cities that have, um, raised their income tax rate, by twenty twenty-eight, we'll have full year's collection. So next year, they expect, um, an increase of about two million. That is, all of that together is five hundred and fifty-five thousand less than what the property taxes that we replace with the income tax will bring in. So we have a timing, cash flow timing issue. It's not a budget shortfall because we will definitely collect that money. We just may not collect it in twenty twenty-six. So we take some of our gap. We, we again, still have a forty-eight percent carryover next year, which is very healthy. And I just want to touch on the current year. The current year's carryover balance is higher than we projected as well because the new businesses that opened. So all of the land banking, the economic development projects are starting to pay off. We're seeing that growth in the income tax, that's helping quite a bit. And we believe that the state, the income tax is a much more stable revenue source. It provides for growth as the city gets into future years. Where the property taxes, remember, were flat for five years and we have to go back and ask again and increase the numbers based on values. So we will increase the growth, or so we realize the growth over time. We're comfortable with the forty-eight percent with like Matt said, we know we're in a transition year, twenty-six, twenty-seven. And twenty-eight, we'll have four years' collection. Let me go through the next slide. So the next slide sort of explains where our budget gap is. Again, it is, it is clearly a deficit because we're overspending current year revenues, but it isn't a structural deficit. So we don't feel hurt by this. We have to identify the, the major components of what's causing it. The lag is one on the collections. The fire station, the first debt payment is due in December. Now, by December, we may have collected more context than what we, what we say, but we are very conservative in our projections. So our first debt payment is due next year without collecting a full year of the new two percent. We still have to pay the debt and that's okay. The income tax lag, we talked about, five hundred and fifty-five thousand less than what the property taxes brought in. But again, that will catch up in a couple of years' time and then we'll see progress after that. We have a twenty-seventh pay year, so we talk about all these things in a perfect storm. Next year is the twenty-seventh pay year. It happens every eleven years. It's kind of like a lead year, but because our employees get paid every two weeks at some point in the calendar that catches up and instead of twenty-six pays, they receive twenty-seven pages. You're gonna work for two weeks, we're gonna pay everybody for this two weeks. And then the master plan, we don't know what the project is because the plan is not quite final, but we did want to set aside some money to pull the project out of that master plan. And so that's another probably a one-time expense that we're maybe probably gonna spend before we collect the money. But again, we will collect the money just in the, in the future year.
Next slide. All right, so now we're talking about personnel and the personnel cost. And I'm fully aware that your personnel costs in a budget are your highest cost. I mean, we can't get anything done without people. So I'd like to say that the city has a lean, efficient team, lean, mean, efficient city team. You all recall a few years back, we did have to kind of right the ship. There was a time period and last year Ben explained where we were to where we are now. What happened? We went through that whole history lesson of, and we all know it, we've lived it, the Hoover Company at its highest peak in the income tax that was coming over. When that left, the, the city made significant cuts and really didn't get back to where it needed to be with personnel. So remember a few years back, we added personnel. This year, we're really proud to say that we have been able to really keep personnel as close as possible while not sacrificing the level of city services that this community, residents and businesses expect. So just to illustrate that, we only have a hundred and fifty total people on payroll at the city of North Canton. That's spent over fourteen various departments. Twenty-four percent of those are, or thirty-five are part-time seasonal or even you're elected, you're counted in that total. That leaves only a hundred and fifteen full-time employees to just a hundred and fifteen people doing all the work. Streets are maintaining ninety-plus miles of roadways. We have parks doing two hundred and sixty acres of parks. Water infrastructure's over a hundred and sixty miles. And what's unique in personnel for a city, unlike maybe a Fortune five hundred company out there where it's a beta five, Monday through Friday, we have various departments that are twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. So that's a lot of staffing around the block, in police, in fire, in dispatch, EMS and our water treatment plant. There are people there twenty-four hours a day, so that's managing, um, that staff. I think we have lean operations, um, but we do that to maximize taxpayer value and we still want to, like I said, hit that excellent service. So all we, and sitting down with every department, and of course, they'd like more. Who wouldn't like more, you know? Be less work for everyone to do, but what do they really need? What do they know they need? Every department was good. One department, as you know, our building department, we reestablished this year back from Safe Belt. We didn't know what we didn't know, uh, but we did know we went down quite a bit. When we were with Safe Belt, we had two, sometimes three, full-time code enforcement. One time we had three and a part-time code enforcement. We went down to one code enforcement. We also went down from two or three inspectors to one, two permit tents to one, and they've been doing great in every area. The code enforcement, we've heard a lot from council, we've heard a lot from residents, maybe we need, we needed to beef up that. Also, bringing a code enforcement officer in for next year, believe it or not, rental registration, three years went by. It's been a place, coming up in twenty-six will be the third year. Twenty-three, we introduced it, and if you pass your inspection the first year, you got a three-year license. So that's gonna be over thirteen hundred inspections coming due with that three-year license. So code enforcement officer can do those rental inspections along with an inspector. A code enforcement officer also is very, the building department is very cross-trained and they back each other up, which is great because we need that. And many of them have certifications in other areas. So our current code enforcement can back up the permit tech. And then that having another code enforcement can then get out to do code enforcement duties as well as both of the code enforcement officers can, like I said, do some of the low, lower hanging group inspections, such as like with rental registration. So adding that, um, in, and then also we are bringing back, um, of what got cut last year. A twenty twenty-five budget cut removed a position out of the fire department that was a third shift, part-time position. And we cut it and then we felt it and we, we did a ride-along and they expressed it. It is a, it is a shift that is, fire, it's one and a half. FTE means full-time equipment, even though it's part-time, it's equal to one and a half. Because it's a twenty-four hour shift. And this is not just, uh, it's more of a position. So if you look at the amount, it's, it's not that that one person would get that. It's that twenty-four hour shift is available every day of the week. Again, going back to that twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five services that we have to divide. So that part-time, uh, person, what we heard was cutting that through the night. Our fire department is just on the, calls are just increasing, you know, they're continuing to go up, up, up. And having that extra position in, in the night, that little, you know, ability to have that extra, um, shift staff provided some rest. We were there, we did a ride-along and it was call after call after call. And then that goes on through the night. Sometimes they lay down, they go to sleep and boom, the next one comes up. So we talked about their mental health, their alertness, how important it is. So in, in working the budget, we were able to say we could, uh, restore that position back. So that's it, just one full-time and one part-time position in the budget personnel costs this year for twenty-six.
Good.
So here are two checks. Both preference to general fund. One on the left is the largest, the general fund expenses. You can see on this chart, income tax is seventy-four percent of the revenue used in the general fund. The other parts of the, the property tax to nine percent. Permanent fees are twelve percent. When it's part of the, which, 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 so, 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 recreation facilities, two percent. Interest is five percent of the revenue we put in the general fund. Brands and others, same, this is first, which is zero percent facing. The properties coming in. Again, charges for services is three percent of the general tax. The general fund expenses, they're, they're to, some of these, so they're twenty, twenty-three percent of the general fund. Purposes, three percent. Parks, parks and lands, it's thirty-two percent of the revenue. Dispatch is five percent. City Hall is ten percent, the assistant company is the headman, also engineering. That is five percent. Transfers, which we transfer funds to, fire EMS.
Hey Jim, would you mind doing that with the colors, just because there's no, there's no labels?
The text didn't show up on.
Just for the people that are like, what, which one is he talking about?
Start over and use colors.
That's okay.
We'll start with the big revenue. Trade, that's the transfers, that's the money transferred to the fire EMS, capital projects fund. So that is thirty-one percent of the general fund expenses. Orange is City Hall, just ten percent. That consists of fire, or sorry, finance, admin, council, engineering, and other use services. Dispatch is gray. That is five percent of the general fund expenses. Economic development is two percent. Parks, so, the economic development is the smallest of the range. Parks and lands, which is the main, it's thirteen percent of the general fund expense budget. The finance department is three percent. Police, which is black, is twenty-four percent of the general fund expenses. Then debt, which is appropriate, is five percent.
Yeah. It's online. Next. Moving on.
Okay, looks like my labels are up there, but, um, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about the different funds. So Gina can explain this really well, but, uh, essentially we have twenty-four different checkbooks, if you will, for the city. We've got a number of different funds that have different revenue sources and different stipulations on how they can be used. And I wanted to talk just a little bit about, um, how those funds relate to one another in terms of the relative magnitude. So, uh, about a third of the, the fund dollars are in the general fund that Jim was just talking about. Another fifth of the fund dollars are in the, uh, fire station. So like Gina said, that's kind of an anomaly this year. But so half of our budget essentially is either that fire, uh, construction fund, uh, or the general fund. And then you can see on there, we've got a number of what we call enterprise funds, which would be things like water, sewer, where we have, um, you know, fees and utility costs that are, uh, funding those funds, basically. We could go to the next one.
I was just gonna show them, uh, since they didn't come up. That's street maintenance. See, they didn't, they didn't come up.
Oh, yeah.
That's two percent. Capital improvements. That's the blue one, which is seven percent. That's not labeled down here. Up there, you can see sewer and the garbage. And then the green one is the insurance fund at five percent. So we'll pick small.
I don't know why the formatting did that.
Yeah. It shifted.
What's the math?
Are you doing the next one?
Yep. It's keeping us in suspense. All right. So this is, I didn't even intend that dramatic, uh.
Transition.
So this is the twenty twenty-six expenses by service type. So difference between what we just discussed, this is actual expenses. Again, uh, public safety is a big component of it. About twenty percent of the expenses are going to, uh, regular police and fire operations. Another twenty percent's going to the new fire station. And about another twenty percent on top of that is expenses related to our utilities, water, sewer, uh, trash. Another ten percent of the expenses are in the public service area. So that's things like our street maintenance, the parks. To build on what Catherine said a couple of slides ago, hopefully that number is shown yet. The management number up in the upper left, uh, that's five percent of the expenses. So I just wanted to, uh, reiterate that like ninety-five percent of our expenses are, are elsewhere. And, uh, to build on what Catherine said, again, we are lean, we do a lot with a modest number of employees. I did pull some data, uh, nationally for cities in our size category, ten to twenty-five thousand people. Typically average five to fifteen employees per thousand resident. So we're at eight employees per thousand resident, so we're right in line. We're actually a little bit on the low side. And I think that's even a little bit more impressive, given that we have our own police. There are communities that are much larger than us. Green is a good example where they don't have their own police. They're patrolled by the Summit County Sheriff. A lot of communities in our size do not have their own water, uh, distribution utility or water treatment plant. So I just wanted to kind of share that with you and illustrate that we, uh, when we say we're lean, we do have some data to back that up and, uh, we're, we're proud of what our team does with, uh, a modest number of people.
So this first slide is a summer budget by department. I don't have to go, I don't have to go one by one, but let's see, police, two point five billion. We're gonna talk about the, uh, police renovation is a large por- portion of that. Dispatch, fifty-five thousand, fire EMS, fourteen point two hundred. Large portion now has a new fire station. So essentially, it's just the overall of each department and the amounts charged for capital lines. So here we have a little more itemization, still kind of by department. I don't think you ever seen one of these either, but just figuring out everyone's reference here. Police, two police vehicles, hundred forty-five thousand dollars. Police department renovation was HVAC, two point four million. Dispatch, fifty-five thousand for the dispatching council in the year three of three, year three of five, which, uh, we do a lot of equipment leasing, equipment lease to finance, right? So, um, we'll purchase something out and we'll split it over multiple years. And so next year will be year three of five for that. So anything that you see year three of, or year, whatever, year, whatever, whatever, just shows the year that we're in with the equipment lease financing. They look through that, these are all the item, all the items that are, um, all capital items being purchased that are pretty much non-business type of water or sewer, right? And then another big one is, um, the street paving. We're gonna be paving, uh, West Maple, the ninth street. Which is six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but we, um, Rob has some grants that are almost with that. City share, city shares six hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
No, continuing.
Yep. Yeah, you could go to the continued one.
Okay.
Okay, um, I'll pick up, uh, where Jim left off. So again, just to remind you, I think most of you know the distinction, but capital, the capital budget is stuff. I like to think of it as, it's bricks and mortar, stuff, whether that's vehicles, buildings, um, asphalt, pipes, et cetera. Um, I think just for context, I did a rough calculation. If you were to take every street, every pipe in this city, the water treatment plant, all of our buildings, you're probably talking about close to a billion dollars worth of, uh, infrastructure. And so, as you can imagine, maintaining that is a never-ending proposition, just like your house. Um, there's entropy, the minute you fix one thing, there's other things that are getting old. And, uh, I just wanted to kind of illustrate for context how much all that stuff really is. So we've got, uh, Catherine mentioned a couple of the numbers, but we've got ninety-four miles of streets, hundred and sixty miles of water lines, a water treatment plant, eighty-one miles of sanitary sewer, seventy-three miles of storm sewer, eleven parks, two pools, and a golf course, which again are amenities a lot of cities our size don't have. Um, I wanted to say too, we do try to be really strategic, uh, in how we go about maintaining that infrastructure. Uh, and we are really resourceful when it comes to getting grants. You guys heard from Rob a couple of weeks ago. Rob is very good at tracking down, uh, grants for a lot of our, uh, water and sewer infrastructure and for our street infrastructure. Uh, we leverage a lot of dollars from ODOT, from SCATS, which is our, our metropolitan planning organization here in Starr County, which allocates federal transportation funds, uh, Ohio Public Works Commission. And those are all really important because they help our local tax dollars go a lot farther. A lot of those grants are eighty, twenty, or ninety, ten. Uh, they make a big difference. Jim mentioned our streets. We've got six hundred and eighty thousand, uh, dollars next year going to street paving, and that is primarily being leveraged through grants where we're, um, uh, repairing water lines or, or fixing sewers and things like that. So, um, we really do try to be good stewards of the funds and bring in as many grants as we can. Um, and in closing, I wanted to just reiterate what Catherine said earlier. Um, this was my first time through the budget. I, I thought I was really impressed, um, just with everyone involved in it. And I think our, you know, our chiefs, our superintendents, our managers, as was said before, they're all very conscientious. I think, uh, their knowledge and resourcefulness really helped make this process, uh, go very smoothly. Our finance department, of course, headed it all up, and I, I still don't know how they keep all those codes straight, but they know them all from heart. Um, and I think with that, I'll turn it back to council for any questions that you might have. I know we threw a lot at you, so we're happy to answer any questions.
It was an excellent presentation. You can tell that there was a lot of work that went into this. Hopefully, the, the message came across. I, I would like to, to reiterate the fact that because in twenty-five, we were good stewards of the money, the carryover for the extra, your, uh, extra pay period is in place. Some of those dollars that didn't get spent to upgrade the, the police department or the HBA system, those carryover dollars are there to be spent. So what looks like overspending in a lot of cases is no, we prepared. Thank you for being good stewards.
I, I think when you talk to, just quickly, when I think back to how it was, it was so much more reactive before. I mean, kind of like you said, they would show up there, we would say, what's this noise, or what is this? And you would have to explain, or something to us, we need this, and this is what the radio system does, and this is a requirement. All that is done beforehand, though. And so everything, when we meet with you, is proactive and looking at the big picture and not nickel and diving, I mean. And that's our job. We are, we aren't to do that. You are the experts. They are the experts in each of their departments, and they know their needs. And then you are there as stewards of the money, and then we are there to say whether you can have it or not. And so the process works, and I think it makes it look, um, strategic, it makes it look forward-thinking. So when you say, Jason, are there questions? Probably not as many because we, we've already met with you. We have seen it. And, and if we had questions, we already asked you. Like, I remember, Gina, you know, you were taking notes on certain things, and we were talking about, well, should we have a forty-nine percent reserve or forty-eight percent reserve? And that's like a half hour, remember? I mean, that's like a half hour discussion between us and really understanding, which allowed us to have money for the park project. So a lot of those questions and concerns were already coming from you, so. I hope the departments, they seem to appreciate it. Yeah, that's true.
They, they know exactly what all of their money is. Quite responsible, they'll say, don't take your questions.
It's pretty awesome to see them, say, hey, I look nervous, frankly, and yeah, they understand the project.
Right. Well, and I'm going to get creative.
But she, that's.
Get our homes, right?
Yeah.
Well, and the transparency too, I mean, that's one of the, I think, people might see. This translates to that document that they can go on or came back out and they can see. You know, you know, we were on a call, Gina and I were on a call just this week, and we were talking about Arrow. And we walked it through, you know, with, with a, a citizen, and it was so easy, but it was there. Now, I'm not saying it was easy for her or I to truly understand the parts and pieces, but to have you there and you able to walk that through and to have any citizen be able to do that at any point. Yes. Right, and Christina and I were better served.
Great.
That was from there, good?
I, I, the process is incredible. I just, you know, coming from a finance guy, I just have a great appreciation for the process, so. I'm a nerd, but it's okay. I appreciate that.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to items four B. It's, uh, the rates and fees in the, in the budget, so Gina. It's assuming there will be no questions, and they explained it perfectly, so. I'm going to take a motion to move, uh, four B to council agenda.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close. Uh, moving on to four C, um, there's some exempt rates. It's, you know, CBA employees. Sounds good. Any questions from council on that one? See none? Is there a motion to move on four C to the council agenda?
None.
All favor?
Aye.
Moving on, uh, and finally, for me, four D, uh, these are the, advances one-time payment transfers and monies paid various funds. Questions from council? See none? Is there a motion to move on four D to the council agenda?
Second.
All favor? Close? That's right.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Personnel and Safety Committee, Chairperson, the A.
So what we're doing here is amending chapter one forty and changing the name from Director of Permits to Director of Permits and Development Services. Then doing so, this way, we're also correcting any other place within the city's documents that may have Director of Permits and updating all of those. The administration has anything else to add?
Um, just one note, in the charter, it's still referred to as the Director of Permits, and it will stay as that until there's the charter amendment. So we're really saying like Director of Permits and slash Development Services. We established under ordinance eleven twenty twenty-one, I, it was established in the Department of Development Services. So it gets a little confusing, so we want to make sure that, that, that title, uh, people understand what that's referring to.
You have any questions? I'm straightforward. I will make the motion to move five, okay, to the council agenda. I need a second.
Aye.
All favor?
Aye.
Well, that will wrap up tonight's meeting. I'll make a motion to adjourn. I need a second. All favor?